Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first item on our agenda is we are going to appoint a board member for our vacant slot. On August 1st, the district posted the board seat vacancy, and Sandra Fortuna was the only individual from the community to apply for this opening. Sandra is running uncontested in the November election to be on the board, so bringing her on at this time would benefit both the board and the district. She is very familiar with board practices, her duties and responsibilities, and also practices and procedures as she was a previous board member. So at this time, I am looking for a motion to appoint Sandra Fortuna to the vacant board seat.
I motion to appoint Sandra Fortuna to the vacant board seat on the Richmond Community School Board of Education effective August 22nd, 2022. This appointment is until the district receives a certified November 8, 2022 election results, at which time, the winner of the said election shall fulfill the remaining term through December 31, 2024.
Do I have support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sandra?
Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry. Is there any discussion?
No.
Other than, "Hooray for us." Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Sandra, if you could join Mr. Walmsley at the podium, please.
We have Pam Beal here, who's the Notary Republic, who certified the swearing-in of the public, so I'm doing more of a ceremonial than the Notary. So if you just raise your right hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Member of the Board of Education.
That I will faithfully discharge of the duties of the office of the Member of the Board of Education.
Of Richmond Community Schools, Macomb and St. Clair Counties, Michigan.
Of Richmond Community Schools, Macomb and St. Clair Counties, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, for coming. Please, join us up at the table.
Yeah, it's all over now, you gotta stay out. You can't run.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Boy, I really want to jump ahead here, Tobacco. I apologize. Okay, Sherri, our mission statement?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Roll call, please.
Candace?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Sandra?
Here.
Danielle is absent with notice.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am here. Your form.
Thank you. Now, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Any discussion, Mr. Walmsley?
We have a couple retirements resignations. We have a resignation for our first little leg- lego league, Kristy Crampton, though she's still an employee of the district, but that's scheduled to be. Robert Clearwood, custodian, he's retiring at the end of the month. He's actually taking a position, I got a promotion, in a non-school-related field, so very excited for him. Lindsay McCoy, Title I teacher. Emily Fall, Fall, excuse me, high school teacher. Megan Rowant, high school teacher. And then two class advisors, Brian Rubin and Sherri, or excuse me, Carrie Shagnon. You'll be seeing appointments for those positions coming up with the upcoming board meeting. We do have a layup scheduled, which will be an action item on the four- item agenda, item number 14. New hires. Brian Braun, he's the musical theater director. He is currently the artistic director for the Richmond Community Theater, so he'll be heading up our theater program. Kimberly Durst-Nim, speech and language pathology, they don't believe she's here. Emily Irving is over here, high school social studies teacher. Welcome, Emily.
Excited to be here. Thank you so much for all for hearing me.
Excellent. Welcome.
Alexis Morowski, another speech and language pathology. Both of those are Phil, which is a new name. Ian O'Neil, which is over in the corner, he is one of our computer techs for the middle school, so welcome Ian. Andre Zabo, high school principal, appointment, current high school principal.
Absolutely. I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity. I have a diverse background, being both at the International Academy of Macomb, where I was one of the founding teachers in teaching economics, as well as six years of experience at Seminole High School. There, I helped orchestrate over 10 CTE programs. We transferred to a wall-to-wall career academy model, which focused on not only college opportunities, but post-secondary opportunities for students. And I really am founded on the belief that relationships may evolve and be different. So I plan to not only build relationships with the students, but the community as a whole. Coming from a small community myself, and working in two small communities, it really is important to me to build those relationships. So I'm very excited, and I've been so graciously welcomed here to Richmond already, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
We have a custodial hire, Lyle Truexler, and the secretary in the athletic facilities and school safety office, Braylon Wetherup. Appointments, they've already been hired by the board, Brett Byrd for JV wrestling coach and middle school football coach, Ken Hook, social studies, Olympiad advisor, and Sarah Pastution for the seventh grade volleyball coach. There were no errors that were brought to my attention on the eight regular board meetings.
Just a question. The class advisors, I know Ms. Shagnon was resigning because she wanted to move with the class, and Mr. Rubin was resigning. Is there any talk about moving with your class from freshman year through, you know, when I worked at Cliftondale, that's what we did. So is there any thought about that?
It was in the contract for a short period, and it was something that was not negotiated to continue.
Okay.
But if you looked at Ms. Shagnon, she wants to move up with her class.
Correct, that's what proud to be asked.
We're trying to honor those that want to move up with their class as they build the relationship, but there might be a situation where someone doesn't want to, or it's just not personally in their personal lives, it doesn't work. So that would be the intent, is they move up to our preference, I should say.
Okay. And I just want to, Kim Durst-Nim, Richmond grad, very excited to be able to come back into her community and work, and she had a family commitment this evening, that's why she wasn't here, but it's always good to see Richmond grads come back and work for us.
Any discussion from any of the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for a student discipline reinstatement hearing.
Pursuant to Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meeting Act, upon the request of the student's parent and/or guardian, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the discipline reinstatement of a student whose identity is known as Student 011022-A.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will return back to our meeting once we're done.
Safety, the health, and some of the other stuff that were categorical in the budget, so we will be bringing that, Tammy and I had preliminary conversations about that, and that will be a better time, because we'll actually know how many students actually showed up for that first week of school, to give us a better sense on our assumption with enrollment. At the last board meeting, there was a parent that spoke about several issues. One of them was preschool and the not having a three-day option for four-year-olds. One of the things that I will be working with Ms. Ara Mangui is doing another survey. We did it a couple years ago, which got us to the four days. So throughout this year, we'll do the survey before we get into next year's offering, to see if there's a need for a three-year-old, a three-day preschool program. At the time that we did it, there was not, parents were asking for five days or all day, which is where we went to, but it seems a good time to do another survey to see what, get a sense of where people are looking for. Particularly our three-year-old preschool, which is with large numbers in our three-year-old preschool, which is a good sign. He also, the gentleman also spoke about school safety, and he, I just want to point out that Mr. Trent, our Director of Athletics Facilities and School Safety, reached out to the parent afterwards, had a lot of conversation with them. He's offered tours with parents to show them and highlight our safety mechanism. And so this gentleman that spoke was, according to Mr. Trent, Mr. Trent was extremely impressed with the measures that we put in place, and didn't really believe that we had all these in place, but saw it firsthand, so kudos to the board for putting those in place, and for the organization for adopting them. So hopefully that relieved, I think it was some of his wife's concern, that he spoke up, just to get it out there. Something going on in the district tomorrow is the preschool summer social, Books on the Beach. If you want to come to Lee Elementary School, there's buckets and books, and we're going to be having a celebration on our summer social with our preschool students, at noon to 2:00, it's in the courtyard on the, I guess it would be the south side of Lee Elementary School, if you can attend. You're more than welcome to attend. Should be a great event, and excited to get everybody back. Miss Ara and Mr. Gibson and Ms. Mangui did a lot to prepare for this, so congratulations to them, and I'm sure it's going to be an awesome event. Just a reminder, the first day of school is a week from, two weeks from tomorrow, September 6th, for kindergarten through 12th grade students, and September 7th, which would be preschool and GSRP and early childhood special education students. Next week is Blue Devil Days. We have high school on Monday, middle school on Tuesday, and elementary school on Wednesday. They're from 5:00 to 8:00. Packages, some packets got mailed today from schools, others will be going out tomorrow. We're finishing stuffing them, so parents should be able to look for that in the mail. There's also be available online and through social media that will be promoting this. But a couple of the buildings are not doing photographs this year, they're going to do it later on, just because we're trying to, it was a little congested with the numbers, so we've scheduled, I think the elementary is the first week of school, and middle school's the first week, and elementary is shortly thereafter, but just going to want to give more time with families to be with their teachers and classes, and see the building, particularly those new families. We have a little over 120 new families that are first through 12th grade to our district, so that's a good sign. Looking forward to that.
Are they residents? Residents?
They're not all residents, there's some school of choice, I don't have the breakdown on that, but sometimes school of choice will fill out the paperwork, and at the last minute they decide to stay in their home. It's been a steady stream, which is a good sign for the district, a lot of residents, a lot of people moving in, and so forth. Just so the board knows, we did purchase for each of the buildings, an ID badge system, so in previous years, when students got their ID badges, that either Blue Devil Days or when they got their school pictures. If you were a new student or missed it, we did not have a mechanism for badges. So each building now has badges, that they'll be issuing to students. There's a couple of information that we're keeping on the back, state law requires that we have National Suicide Prevention Line on the back, so that will be on there. The CARE Student Assistance Number will be on the back, just as a resource for families, as well as the OKC say, website and phone number, so it's a good thing, so that any new students who come in after that date still feel part of the school. With that, I don't have anything else.
Just to clarify, the high school, you're still, they're still doing pictures at Blue Devil Days?
Yes, they're still doing pictures. I believe they'll be in here, they'll set up the stations in here. I think there's three or four stations, I think they'll have some.
Anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Walmsley?
Will those badges be the same badges that they'll use to get on and off the bus?
On the badges, there is a barcode, that's the barcode that they use for the food service when they scan, but it's the same barcode that could be used when the transportation was. Thank you for bringing that up. That is delayed, the implementation, I know the letter that goes out from the transportation indicates that it is delayed. It's a supply issue, getting materials, installables. There are some parents that have reached out to me, and I'm working through the concerns that they have regarding the system, but it will not be starting at the start of school. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Next item on our agenda is items of interest from the board. I'm going to start with our new person, Sandy. Any interest?
Actually, I just want to say that I'm excited to be on the board, I'm excited to get back to my community, so thank you so much, but that's really all I have to say for now. Maybe next time.
Angela?
I would just like to welcome Sandy to the team again, and excited to have you back on board. Look forward to working with you again.
Sherri?
I'm also, thank you.
Margaret?
I'm good.
Candace?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I also wanted just to share that there'll be a PTA meeting for the middle school next Thursday at 3:00 at the middle school library. Thank you, I thought I'd share that, because we had to change the date because of the parking lot issue, but, so it'll be on the 25th at 3:00.
And I just would like to also welcome Sandy to our board, and I look forward to working with you. I would also like to welcome back our staff that have been starting to come in, and our students as we start this 22, 23 school year, and I hope we have a great one. Okay, next item on our, is our action items. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the board resolution for Student 011022-A disciplinary reinstatement hearing.
I move that following a closed session, student discipline reinstatement hearing, the board votes to reinstate Student 011022-A, consistent with the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
I'm sorry, Sandy. Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
The attached resolution is, it just says what was discussed, there's no conditions, so I have it here. I have to make adjustments because of the absence of the board, so.
Okay, I also just want to say that, you know, I wasn't particularly a part of this students disciplinary action, but I'm happy to trust that the board, obviously, was, you know, acted appropriately, and I'm just going to, you know, I'm going to vote as the board votes, because I feel like that's probably just the best interest of the student.
Yeah, I second that as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of the 22, 23 Student Parent Code of Conduct.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the amendments to the 2022, 2023 Student Parent Handbook, as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Angela?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Other than, I'm assuming Sherri wasn't here, you're good with the change?
Right, yes.
Yeah, I'm fine. I read through, and I was fine with the changes that were made.
Again, I don't have that change, but I'm just gonna, I guess I'm gonna vote, you know, as the board votes, I mean, if there's a big difference, then I guess we'll have to deal with that at the time, but.
Well, and what the change, it had to do with student hearings?
Okay.
And that, and so that can be something we can, you can talk to Brian about.
Yeah.
It was a whole directed idea, I guess, is, you know.
Okay, all right, perfect. Yeah, that does help, thank you.
Any other discussion?
And I would just like to point out, in your back, you have, there is that language we have to add about, because we accepted the grant for new debt forgiveness, we don't do any of these things. I mean, I can't imagine a district who would do those things, but we are obligated to put it in writing in our handbook, and so it was caught after the board meeting, and so that's why it's in your backup for that, so.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Solution Tree for Professional Development Services.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Solution Tree for Professional Development Services, for an amount not to exceed $13,000, as presented in the attached documentation, for which funding from the 2022, 2023 general funds authorized.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can we just tell Sandy a little bit what it's about?
Sure. At the last board meeting, there was a presentation Ms. Ara presented regarding contract with the Solution Trees to help our staff and principals and staff on understanding professional learning communities, and moving as a organization to the next level of trying to improve instruction in our, in the district.
That was about the last board meeting, right? Okay, I watched that, so I'm good.
Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a contract with Rocket Flag for flagpoles.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of three flagpoles to be placed at the varsity baseball field, junior varsity baseball field, and varsity slash junior varsity softball fields, for an amount not to exceed $15,956.25, as presented in the attached documentation, and for which funding from the 2022, 2023 general fund is authorized.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you.
And we're, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't say discussion.
Any discussion?
And we're doing this because of all the work that we're doing.
Yeah, we did not, we did not build in the flagpoles for the fields. So when we do the amendment on the budget, we'll increase that line item.
Okay.
Flagpoles. It was a request that baseball had given us, and looking back, there may notice it was not in the final discussion in the transfer, so, but the current, the baseball JV do not have flags.
Right.
The softball does, but they're in very poor shape, so the flagpole at that softball will be kind of similar to the scoreboards where they blow it up against, so it's the one flagpole field.
Oh, okay.
And it matches all the existing flagpoles and so forth, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of field trip transportation rate increase.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve an increase in the 2022, 2023 field trip transportation rates from $4.15 to $5.76, as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
So we're, that's okay, so we're back full force, field trips, all that stuff, right?
Yes, we are.
And so this is.
It's driver contingent.
Right.
On field trips, but the one thing I did, I did change is, the board never tried to get drivers, is they, they used to get a reduced rate to do a field trip run. I don't know why that was in the contract, ever, their previous contract. We just carried it over, when they no longer were collective bargaining, we gave independent. So I did make the decision that they just make their daily rate, regardless of whether it's run. I think that was a deterrent for people to pick up field trips, so my hope is that we can honor more field trips and get more people into this, and be able to do them, so.
So if you'd like to drive.
If you're interested, I'll be too tight, if you want to be a driver.
That would be good.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a resolution to lay off Richmond Education Association employees.
I move to approve the attached resolution and layoff Richmond Education Association REA teacher, as indicated and outlined in the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I actually did have a question on that. Is it, because I'm kind of newer to this, but is it generally, we wait till the fall to let this employee know this? Or were they informed before?
This employee, Jamie and I had the conversation back in June, when we were getting ready to send tentative assignments out. All teachers have to receive a tentative assignment, usually seven days after the board approves the budget. So with this teacher, we had not only face-to-face, but when they received their tentative assignment, it was no assignment, because they didn't have one, based on the scheduling and we were running this course. The uniqueness about this particular one is this teacher's only certified in this course, has no other certification, and it's oftentimes what we call an annual authorization, which their work experience is what we're getting temporary certification for, which makes it a little unique on this particular one. Normally, they probably don't know. Any other teacher, we would find a different subject area or other certifications to try to maintain employment, but this is a unique one that they don't have any other certification. So to go back to your original question, were they notified? Yes, we had the conversation back in June, that we said, your tentative assignment's going to be this. I didn't give her a lot of optimism that I thought it was going to change, but I did say, it possibly could, if we got a bunch of kids coming in or requesting this course, it could change. We didn't, so we are in the process of giving final notifications to teachers and their schedules, we've had to adjust some schedules.
But the answer, though, too, is that yes, it does happen at this time of year, and it's all budget related, this is class sizes, but yes, this is.
Well, even scheduling affects, like.
And scheduling, right, if there's interest in the class.
Because you could have, it could be the state goes a whole different direction in funding, and now I'm coming back here in August, saying, okay, they cut us, how are we going to weather it? Or what I thought the kindergarten enrollment was, it's not coming in at that, so I need to reduce a cost. None of that is true, we haven't had to, this is unique just because of the certification of the individual.
Generally, we try to find them something else within?
Yes.
Okay. Thankfully, in four years, this is the only layoff we've had.
I was thinking about that.
Yeah, that's true.
I think I inherited one when I started, and I don't think, you're right, I haven't been to that layout since, so it's an anomaly.
So this is because they can't be placed somewhere else?
They have no certification to teach any other subjects.
And then can I, I don't know, can I ask how long, how long is this particular teacher running with us?
Let's say six. And at least, I was here and Sherri was.
I hired her.
So it's been, yeah, six years.
Six, six.
No.
Around there.
No.
Yeah, I hired her. I've been off for four years.
This is my, this will be my ninth, so yeah, it's been off for four.
So I've been retired?
2017. 2005 years? Five years, 2017.
That's too bad, because it's an interesting class.
Yeah.
I'm surprised.
The enrollment of the class over the year, and part of that is, you know, as we add programs and we're trying to address students' interests, you're either kind of squeezing the balloon, you're taking it from one to put it in another, though our enrollment has been going up. I mean, our high school, at one point, we were below 400, 500, and that really creates some challenges. We're above 500 in that aspect, so that's a good sign. It's just it's not going up as quickly to keep those other classes, so.
So how soon do we, how soon does, like, does the official notification go out? Because like, that one individual isn't necessarily official, right?
No, the last page in your packet, because I think there's one that's dated tomorrow. We will send that letter out tomorrow to the individual. She was notified. Yeah, we, she was notified last week that it's coming, that it's going to be on this agenda, and then we'll send the official notice out tomorrow.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Being no further business, we will adjourn at 7:43.